Regular meeting number 30 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Harden, will you please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the ground and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Rabbi Avi Goldstein from Beth Jacob Modern Orthodox Congregation to lead us in prayer.
Avinu Shabbashomayim, O God in heaven, sovereign master of the universe, please bestow your blessing this evening on the Columbus City Council, its elected officials and participants, as they come together to govern the city with justice and compassion. Dear God, you wrote in the Bible in this week's Torah portion, "U'krosam dor ba'aretz." You shall proclaim liberty throughout the land, indeed the very words emblazoned on the Liberty Bell. We gather here tonight to protect and secure the very liberty you so desire, the liberty that is the bedrock of our great country through a legislative process undertaken with fundamental fairness. By treating our community and all of humanity with equality and with honesty, with respect for difference, and the human dignity that adheres in all mankind created in your image, we honor your word, we fulfill your commandments, and bring more light into the world. Rebono shall Allah, master of the universe, God in heaven, please bless the officials of the city council in our great city of Columbus. Guide their deliberations with wisdom and justice, with love and grace, such that they forge greater peace and harmony in our city and community. Bring honor to your great name and your blessing to all of mankind. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda to be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Yes, President Klein, members of council, letter addressed to the city clerk from the Board of Elections dated May 20, 2016 stating the following. On behalf of the Franklin County Board of Elections, I hereby certify that the Board has examined the part petitions for initiated charter amendment, city council districts received by our office from you on May 11, 2016. The numbers of valid and invalid signatures on the part petitions for the prospective initiative are as follows: total signatures 39,308; valid signatures 19,035; percentage of valid signatures submitted relative to the number of total raw signatures, 48.4%. The total number of voters, electors that participated in the 2015 general municipal election for mayor was 177,793. The number of electors who represent 10% of the total electors is 17,780. Please let us know if we may be of further assistance. Sincerely, Jeff Mackey, Manager, Election Operations, Franklin County Board of Elections. In addition to the communication from the Board of Elections, the city clerk has forwarded to city council the Charter, excuse me, the city attorney's memorandum dated May 13, 2016 regarding legal sufficiency as required by Section 42-9 of the city charter, which states the city clerk shall, upon receipt forthwith, forward to the council the election authorities' report regarding signature validation and the city attorney's findings regarding legal sufficiency.
Is that it, clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any resolutions by members of council, starting with Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Yes, President Klein, thank you. Tonight, we have a couple development projects on our agenda for second reading. These projects have been, as they should be, the subject of debate, compromise, and cross-examination. An overarching issue within these discussions is the use of tax incentives. Tax incentives are a critical tool in the economic development toolbox when it comes to retaining and attracting jobs. Every community across the country uses incentives in order to compete with one another and to facilitate an environment that encourages population and job growth. Columbus is one of the fastest-growing cities in the Midwest. Our unemployment rate is consistently lower than the state and national averages, and experts project record population growth over the next 35 years. This demonstrates in part the great success that the city has achieved using our current toolbox. However, even amid success, in fact, maybe especially amid success, it is crucial to reexamine and hold ourselves to an ever higher standard. Our environment here in Columbus should be one that is attractive to developers who help facilitate job growth while also fair to the taxpayer. That is why I'm sponsoring Resolution 0124-2016 in support of the Department of Development's initiation of a comprehensive study of city, of Columbus tax incentives. As Chair of the Economic Development Committee, I am also committed to a public review of the study's findings. Director Shoney, can you give us an update on the RFQ that the department has put out?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, President Klein, members of council. We're very excited to get started on this process. The department issued earlier in the month a request for qualifications to firms, both locally and nationally, seeking help in understanding our job market and our real estate market and the impact of our property tax and jobs incentives on those areas of our economy. As Councilmember Brown mentioned, it is the right time to do this because we're in a time of success. We have the opportunity to step back and look at the system that we have, figure out where it's working, figure out how it's working, and then go forward to improve the system. So, we're looking to hire a firm to help us really understand the market, how our incentives are impacting market dynamics. The RFQ closed on Friday. We had seven responses from firms, both locally and nationally. I think two of those firms are local, five of them are national. Most of the firms are teaming up with a variety of different folks. Our objective over the next month and a half will be to use the RFQ process to better define our scope on the study, better define our timing, and frankly, better define the price, so that we can then put out a revised scope of work for requests for proposals. Our hope is to have a firm selected by the middle of July. Whether we would be in a place to bring a contract for that to council before break or after break, we'll have to see how the process goes, but that's our timeline for right now. In terms of the timeline for completing the study, we would be looking to have that completed. We'll know through the RFQ and RFP process better when that's going to be completed. A couple of other things I'd like to say about the incentives process. Number one, just to clear a couple things up, there's been a lot of talk over the last few weeks about incentives and really focused on, frankly, the short north. And there's been some discussion, both in the public, and then there was a letter to the editor on Saturday saying that, you know, we needed to offer these same kinds of incentives in places like Linden and the Hilltop. Frankly, we do already. We have our tax incentive programs go into a wide variety of neighborhoods, both for residential development and for commercial and industrial development. So, we haven't done a good enough job of promoting that fact, frankly, and we're going to try and find ways to better promote that. But if there's anyone that you're talking to, if there's anyone in the listening and viewing audience who has that question, please do reach out to us at the Department of Development or go to our webpage. We lay it out on our webpage where those incentives are available, and we will work with you to help you invest in Columbus.
Okay. Thank you, Director Shoney. That's informative. Are there any questions for my colleagues? All right. Then, again, I am introducing Resolution 0124X-2016 in support of a comprehensive study of city of Columbus tax incentives utilized to protect tax dollars and to encourage smart and sustainable growth and development in our neighborhoods. Hearing no questions from my colleagues, I move for adoption. Oh, nope, we have one question.
Thank you, council member. Just want to clarify, in the city's history, have they ever done anything like this before?
I forget where I've said this, and I may have said it in this meeting. Thank you, council member, President Klein, Chairwoman. We have not had the chance to get the definitive answer, which would be to ask Mr. Dorian, but to our knowledge, there has not been a study done like this.
Great, and I also want to highlight that Councilmember Stenziano is a joint sponsor. I forgot that. So, hearing no further questions from my colleagues, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick announcement, not a resolution, but this Wednesday, May 25, at 5:00 p.m., I will be holding a public hearing to talk about ordinance 1079 that Councilmember Stenziano is co-sponsoring with me to create the new Department of Neighborhoods. And so, we encourage folks to come out. It'll be here in council chambers this Wednesday, May 25, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I have one resolution, and I would like to ask representatives from North Central Mental Health, as well as Southeast Healthcare Services, to come down to the podium. And it is Resolution 0122X-2016, introduced by President Podem Tym Tyson, and I am speaking on it in her absence. And this resolution is to declare May 2016 as Mental Health Month in the city of Columbus and to recognize the work of North Central Mental Health and Southeast Healthcare Services. I'm just going to read a short portion of this resolution, just to highlight the work that both of your organizations are doing here in Columbus. Whereas, the city of Columbus, in a proactive effort to raise awareness in recognizing the need to change how we talk about depression, suicide, and the various mental health challenges that impact our community, is celebrating the work of North Central Mental Health and Southeast Healthcare Services, who have been providing mental health services in our community for more than 30 years, in the case of Southeast, and since 1973, in the case of North Central. And be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby declare May 2016 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Columbus and recognizes and celebrates the work of North Central Mental Health and Southeast Healthcare Services in our community. There are no questions or comments, I first move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, and I would now like to offer that for both of you to make some comments.
Council President Klein, Councilwoman Page, and members of city council, thank you so much, one, for taking the time to recognize that May is Mental Health Month. We struggle with mental health issues in our community, and part of that struggle has been due to the stigma attached to people who live with mental illness. You are very much aware, in our communities too, we are now struggling with serious heroin addiction issues, opioid addiction. The work that Southeast does, and North Central and others, is often downstream. We're working with people that are struggling with illness, and I would like to commend all of you this evening for the work that you're doing that's upstream. Your Department of Neighborhoods, as example, is an effort to really handle issues that create stronger communities. And with stronger communities, we are creating prevention in terms of mental illness and other health issues. So, thank you so much for the work you do and for the resolution this evening.
Thank you, President Klein, members of council. I'll just add a couple of things to what Sandy said. At North Central, we'll see about 4,000 people in a year. About half those people are individuals who have a serious and persistent mental illness that presently cannot be cured. Bio-medicine hasn't found cures for schizophrenia and other illnesses. These are people who have to have lifelong support and treatment. People reach different levels of recovery, and many people do well, many people still struggle, and many live lives that are difficult. These illnesses strike all persons, regardless of race, socioeconomic background, it just seems to happen. Research is still going on. It's work that we do, we like doing it, we appreciate the opportunity to do it. North Central works very much with suicide prevention. We have a very robust volunteer program. You'll find about 115 community citizens who are not employees manning the suicide hotline here in Franklin County 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We had about, I believe, 160 completed suicides in Franklin County last year. We'll take in the neighborhood of 10,000 calls per year on the hotline. So, thank you so much for having us here. We very much appreciate your recognition for what we do.
Thank you so much for coming down.[995.00][995.00](APPLAUSE) And President Klein, I have two quick announcements. On this Thursday, May 26, the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging is having its open house at the new location where the previous or the prior Bob Evans headquarters. You are more than welcome to attend. There will be a brief program starting at 4:30 p.m. And also, on Thursday, May 26, Columbus City Schools, in collaboration with city council, will have a celebration here for the Mentors and Mentees Program that started this year, actually, for seniors who were on track for graduating. And it will start at 5:30 p.m. It should end around 7:00, but we welcome everyone to come as well and to just celebrate the high school seniors from Columbus City Schools who have completed this program. That's all I have, President Klein.
I have no items this evening, President Klein.
Well, I do have one resolution from the floor, and it is 128X-2016. And as I read the resolution, I'd like to invite our honorees, Bishop Fred L. Marshall and First Lady Evangelist Molly Marshall, to come to the podium. And while they're walking, I'd like to move for adoption, if I can get a second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Resolution adopted. Whereas Bishop Fred L. Marshall and First Lady Evangelist Molly Marshall became the organizers of Smyrna Missionary Baptist Church in 1976. And prior to his leadership at Smyrna Missionary Baptist Church, Bishop Marshall worked at the State of Ohio Department of Corrections, Ohio Youth Commission, aiding in the rehabilitation of area youth. Whereas Bishop Marshall serves as the presiding bishop of Free Gospel Churches of Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ Headquarters in Lawton, Oklahoma, and the Good News Holy Convocation. Bishop Marshall has a longstanding dedication to social service, tirelessly serving his community in faith, as president of the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance, the Youth Advocate Service Board of Directors, and the Franklin County Criminal Justice Board. Bishop and First Lady have ministered to the spiritual needs of the Columbus community and dedicated their lives as serving the Lord and their church and the community. And whereas Bishop Marshall and First Lady Evangelist Marshall spent the week of May 15 through May 22 with the theme of affectionately imparting a legacy of faithfulness unto God and His people, celebrating this great accomplishment alongside friends, family, and their congregation, which I had the honor to be at on Sunday. Bishop, thank you, as always, for opening up your doors. Now that the resolution has been adopted, I'd like to turn the floor over to you, Bishop.
By the grace of God, to our Honorable Mayor Andy Ginter, in his absence, and city council president Zach Klein, council members Priscilla Tyson, Mike Brown, Elizabeth Brown, Mike Stenziano, Shannon Harden, and Jasir Page. Both me and my wife sincerely appreciate the grace of this honor and recognition of 40 years of an undeserved privilege to serve our God and to serve our community and to serve all of His people. Our world is ever-changing. The problems are becoming more and more complex and challenging, and at times, they seem to be in conflict with our mutual and distinctive responsibilities as servants of God, mutually ordained by God. However, after 40 years, being in Columbus in this vicinity and experiencing a variety of all types of challenges and conflicts that have, illnesses that have plagued our society, after 40 years of working together with the city officials, with the community of faith, and the citizens of Columbus, I can say that we have not had one challenge, or one trial, or one tribulation that we have not overcome as we work together to carry out the will of God. So therefore, after 40 years, I am a firm and fixed believer that as mutually ordained instruments of God, working together, as we have for the past 40 years, we will continue to fulfill the will and the work of our God to which all of us have been ordained. Wherefore, in behalf of my wife, and I, and our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I'm proud to be a citizen of Columbus, Ohio. And as I stand here, I pledge and renew my sincere commitment and support to the Columbus City Council, as you all have been ordained, such as we have by God. So with respect and sincere appreciation and sincere humility, I say thanks for the honor and thanks for the privilege of working together to raise the quality of life for all of God's people. So by the grace of God, you all are commended for what you have done, and we thank you for the honor and the privilege that you have bestowed upon us. God bless you.
Thank you, Bishop. Any questions or comments from my colleagues before we give him a rousing round of applause? I want to recognize all the members of Smyrna. I think there's at least 2,000 or 3,000 people here that came up the elevator. So will you please? Please stand up if you're from Smyrna. Let's have a round of applause for Bishop Marshall.[1401.83][1401.83](APPLAUSE) Thank you, Bishop. God bless you, First Lady. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
And thank you. And we would be remiss if we did not recognize our deacon, Rick Pfeifer, over there in the court.[1428.47][1428.47](LAUGHTER)
How about comments from our elected officials? Anyone from the Auditor's Office, the Treasurer's Office, Deacon Pfeifer? I don't see any representatives from the administration here or the judiciary. At this time, I'd like to request the following ordinances to be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda, and that's Resolution 125X-2016. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive second reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance 1070-2016. Economic Development Committee, ordinance 1212-1257, 1277, 1308, and 1337-2016. Environment Committee, ordinance 1208-2016. Education Committee, ordinance 1293-2016. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 1192-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolutions 112X and 113X-2016. Small and Minority Business Development Committee, ordinance 1290-2016. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 963, 1163, 1167-2016. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 1079-2016.
We do have some first reading speakers. It looks like the first one is Whitney Smith. Ms. Smith? Looks like you signed up for 1079-2016. If you just could state your name for the record, any organizations you represent, you have three minutes.
Definitely. Thank you so much. I'm Whitney Smith, and I'm the co-chair of Represent Columbus. Represent Columbus has to do with neighborhoods because we are a bipartisan, grassroots, citizen-driven group that began due to the need for neighborhood representation. We agree with giving every neighborhood a voice, and here are the reasons why we stand in support with decisions that increase neighborhood ability to be heard here in Columbus. First of all, accountability. We believe that city council should be accountable to the voters, not big donors or developers. Here are two neighborhood examples of where their voice was not heard. Recently, we have seen protests outside of a parking garage that city council has bought for their own convenience for $10 million. If neighborhoods had had a voice on city council, then the neighborhood that needed only $8 million for their fire safety equipment would have been able to speak up against such wasteful spending. Recently, we have seen how the lack of neighborhood representation has negatively affected the short north. Many neighborhoods and small business owners are being hurt by city council's decision to go against city code and go against the neighborhood's wishes by giving a sweetheart deal to a developer, who has also donated large amounts of money to city council's reelection campaigns. Thus, if there was neighborhood representation, the residents of the short north could have had a say in what happened in their neighborhood before city council decided to violate city code and change the landscape of their home. The other reason that we believe neighborhood representation is very important is that we have seen in recent years how corruption can scar our city as ongoing FBI investigations continue. If members of city council were directly accountable to neighborhoods they represent, they would be less tempted to take large donations that facilitate a pay-to-play mentality at Columbus City Council. Because of the lack of representation of city council, the lack of representation on city council, and the refusal to give neighborhoods a voice, Represent Columbus has been forced to take the role of the watchdog, helping give neighborhoods a voice. We are happy to see that city council is moving in a direction to help give neighborhoods a say on city council, and we think that it will work very well with the new representation structure city council will have after the August election. Thank you.[1707.74][1707.74](APPLAUSE)
Ms. Smith? Do you have a question? Councilmember Stenziano?
Thank you, President Klein. Just curious, how many neighborhoods you feel the city of Columbus has?
We actually have probably about 20 neighborhoods that are different, unique demographics. However, the system that we are actually advocating for would be 10 districts, so 10 representative districts based on population side, and then three members at large. So, we can't be perfect to every neighborhood, every tiny, unique neighborhood, but what we can do is give a lot more representation than what we currently have, because what we currently have is people in every single neighborhood feeling neglected, from the short north to the hilltop.
Follow-up. What neighborhood do you live in?
I live in German Village.
Follow-up. Do you feel German Village is represented at Columbus City Council?
I don't feel like any neighborhood is represented at city council. I feel that the main things that are represented at city council are those who contribute the most to your campaigns.
One more follow-up. So, it's my understanding that you're part of this bipartisan coalition, but you are a Republican running for office. How do you feel Donald Trump, your candidate for president, would feel about doubling the size of a government?
Donald Trump is not my candidate. I will not support Donald Trump, and I don't think that question is on topic. Thank you.[1793.53][1793.53](APPLAUSE)
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith? You have more questions?
Well, thank you, Council President Klein. You ended on topic, so I just want to get us back to topic.
I appreciate that.
1079 is about the Neighborhoods Department, which is about bringing code enforcement officers and community relation commissions officers to the neighborhood. So would encourage you to come out to my public hearing on Wednesday to learn more about the department, and so we can talk about how we can all work together to respond to neighborhood issues. But thank you for coming down.
I appreciate that. I'll be there. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Smith, so she doesn't have to walk all the way back again?
Getting quite the workout.
Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would appreciate to enforce the rules of council, some decorum to appreciate with the applause. We do have some potentially contentious issues on tonight's agenda, but we're respectful to all those involved, so please keep your applause nonexistent. Our next speaker is Jonathan Beard. Mr. Beard, I see him coming down. Looks like you're also speaking for on 1079.
Mr. President, members of council, good evening. My name is John Beard. I'm with Columbus Coalition for, I'm sorry, with the Columbus Compact. It's my day job, and I co-chair Represent Columbus along with Whitney as well. I am supporter of the Neighborhood Development Department. As you know, for the last 20 years, I've worked in neighborhoods, in Columbus's most distressed neighborhoods, and have probably done more neighborhood work in more areas than anybody else in the city over that period of time. Each administration puts its own imprint on what it wants to do in the neighborhood. Mayor Coleman had the Neighborhood Pride Initiative and put liaison officers out in the neighborhoods, and that was a good thing. Obviously, didn't have the intended result, because when Mayor Gunther came in, he went to Linden, which was, Mayor Coleman had gone to 16 years earlier, and said the same thing, that the neighborhood still needs work. So anything an administration could do to improve their delivery of services in the neighborhood is a good thing. The one thing that troubles me is that this council keeps looking over the fact that part of neighborhood delivery of services includes political system. That's why Represent Columbus was formed. It was to improve the delivery of political services in our neighborhoods. That needs to happen along with the administrative component that you're so quick to do. It's been five years we've had this moving forward, and actually, the fact that there's not an ordinance prepared for tonight's meeting is really disrespectful nonsense, okay? We need and we want good representation from neighborhoods. We don't have that right now in city council. We ask for your help moving this forward and putting this on the ballot where it belongs. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stenziano?
Thank you, President Klein. You mentioned that providing good services, political service? Can you clarify what that means?
That means like, five years ago, when we were having drug-related gun violence on East Main Street, and we asked for council to amend its previously declared unconstitutional law on loitering aid of drug offenses, so that the police could actually enforce it, which they have been told not to enforce because it was unconstitutional. It means council actually responding to the neighborhood and working with the neighborhood to make that happen in a good manner, timely. Further questions? That's one example.
Any other questions for Mr. Beard? Thank you, Mr. Beard.
Thank you very much.
And just as Mr. Beard takes his seat, to let Mr. Beard know that because the clerk's office received communications on Friday, which is when the agenda is prepared, the action to take by city council will have to come from the floor, which is why it doesn't appear on the agenda, because it came on Friday late. So when we prepare our agenda, it doesn't appear on the agenda. The next speaker is Joe Motil, 1308, 2016, is what you're speaking on, Mr. Motil?
President Klein, members of city council, the proposed tax abatement is yet another unnecessary handout to a major corporation that, in this instance, is the largest package delivery company in the world with a market cap of $90 billion and who had a profit of $4.8 billion in 2015. If this city council approves of this tax abatement at its next meeting in two weeks, you have granted tax abatements for $14.5 million in just one month's time. And this will make the second tax abatement during that time to a major corporation that yielded gross profits in 2015 that were over $1 billion. These incentive, tax incentive and tax abatement subsidies to the rich and privileged has got to stop. In most cases, these companies and developers are already enjoying the windfalls of locating in the Columbus area due to its well-maintained infrastructure, its midwestern, geographically central location, and an educated workforce and other considerable amenities. It is time to revisit the enterprise zones, which some have probably been in existence for decades, and they need to be taken off the books. Recent areas that have been recipients of tax abatements and other incentives, such as Polaris, the short north, Eastern, downtown, have been getting fat for quite some time and share little or no risk of development or expanding their companies, therefore do not require tax abatements or incentives. According to the Federal Report of the Office of Revenue Analysis, homeowners of Columbus, Ohio have the fifth highest overall tax burden of any large city in the nation, and this is due primarily to its high income tax and property tax rates. When you approve these tax abatements to both multimillion-dollar developers, billion-dollar worldwide corporations, and the rest of corporate America, we, the taxpayers, have to make up the difference in footing the bill for lost property tax giveaways that affect the funding to educate our children and the loss of revenue in our city's general fund. That translates into the loss of dollars for our rec. centers, health and human services, assisting our seniors, and public safety services. Our pocketbooks in neighborhoods are hurting enough as it is, so please stop offending the working middle class of this city by trying to justify these handouts to those who are already abundantly wealthy and who consider these subsidies as entitlements. I also find it disturbing that some council members accept campaign contributions from those who are granted tax abatements and other incentives. Such action shouts with impropriety, and in order to gain the public's trust, the city's new ethics reform laws should include language prohibiting this practice. Thank you.
Please refrain from clapping, otherwise I'll have no choice but to have the officers step in just to make sure that we keep decorum. We want to keep the agenda moving, okay? So Director Shoney, you have anything to say?
Thank you, President Klein, members of council. This project will be a hundred and, sorry, take off, put on your glasses to read, not take them off. I believe it's $175 million investment on the West Side. It is a project in which we were in very intense competition with Nashville and St. Louis for this project. It is a project that could have been located in multiple places. UPS has been a longstanding, very positive employer on the West Side. We are very comfortable making this recommendation to city council, and we believe it is absolutely necessary in order to secure this investment, which will help make this facility stable for the long term.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Ms. Motil. The next speaker is Mahdi Grace, 963-2016.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mahdi Grace. I represent, oh, thank you, councilpeople and President Klein. I represent Deschler Park Civic Association, as well as the South Side Area Commission, and I appreciate the infrastructure and items that we have currently received, but I feel that the South Side has been neglected. I've been working with Councilman Stenziano and Ms. Page, and they have been very helpful, and I would like to see progress, more progress, in my area of the South Side, because it seems that most of the funds have been going to the Parsons Avenue area, and I would like to see more brought over into the neighborhoods to help the growth, because I have talked to some of the councilpeople about that.
I want to make sure you still have two minutes if you wish to continue talking, but if that's okay, if you're done, I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
No, I, I'm not a long-winded person.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Grace? Thank you, Ms. Grace. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read in the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of Expression 126X-2016, Finance Committee, ordinance is 1210, 1247-2016. Economic Development Committee, ordinance 1345-2016. Administration Committee, ordinance 1198-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 1255-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 1271-2016. Housing Committee, ordinance 1338-2016, 1340, 1341, 1342, and 1343-2016. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1215 and 1235-2016.
We do have one non-agenda item speaker that's, I'm sorry, we have one consent action portion speaker, and that's Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Says you're speaking in favor of 1338-2016?
Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins, the chairman of Soli-Vacant Property in the North Linden area. I just want to know how long this property been in, a land bank of 1639, 1641 Oak Street. I just want to know how long it has been in the land bank, and what would the property be used for.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. If Director Shoney, you could follow up with that information, and Mr. Wilkins, I would Any questions or comments from my colleagues about the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent action? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page? Stenziano? President Klein?
Yes, consent action carries. We'll now go to the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee this evening is Economic Development, chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, floor yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Economic Development, we have, first up, we have ordinance number 1213-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement and a real estate purchase contract with WC Partners LLC, and to the extent applicable, to waive the Land Review Commission requirements of the Columbus City Code. We have a few speakers on this. We have one for, and we had too many, we had a few too many against, we accept three speakers against, so the group, I know that the six of you talked about which three of you would be speaking against. So could Mr. Josh Quinn, who is speaking for the ordinance, please come, and then also the three who are going to speak against, also please rise and make your way towards the front. Mr. Quinn, please state your name and entity you're representing and address.
Hi, members of council, President Klein. My name is Josh Quinn. My wife and I opened a shop called Tiger Tree in the short north almost 10 years ago. We recently opened a second store called Cub Shrub. I wanted to speak specifically about 1231, but my comments go with 1336 as well. As Councilmember Brown mentioned earlier about attracting jobs, I want to say that it's equally important to consider the ramifications of retaining existing jobs. In the last 10 years, as I've been in business in the short north, the landscape and the demographics of who have been coming down there and what that neighborhood is utilized for have changed dramatically. It was primarily a daytime neighborhood. There were certainly nightlife activities when we opened, but I think things like Gallery Hop existed and were so interesting because it was experiencing the neighborhood in a different landscape. There's been a dramatic shift towards restaurants and bars and nightlife activities in the past 10 years. I'm not an economist. I can't say that I completely understand the implications of what the tax incentives actually mean, but I can say as an employer of 10 people in a growing company that's had over 50 employees go through its doors in the past 10 years, retailers in the neighborhood are suffering because of that shift. Parking is the number-one problem that any of our customers and visitors of the short north continually address. Even the residents are undergoing a permit change to address some of those increased problems with parking. The two structures, from what I understand, will net about 300 additional public spaces and more than that at night, once the offices are gone. We're looking at over 300 office employees. Those things, I think, would be dramatically beneficial to the retailers and help swing the pendulum back towards assisting us in a way that we desperately need.
Questions for Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And now, we'll start with, hello. I'm sorry, I thought I knew your name, but I don't. Can you introduce yourself?
Ross Reinhardt, 51 West Second Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors, and thank you for my three minutes. First off, say the city is a great product, and we've been quoted some statistics already today. What I looked up was, we're at 787,000 total population now, due to possibly grow at 38%, so that's 299 and 60 new people per year moving into our city. This is a national phenomenon as well. We are poised to take well advantage of this. And what I'm concerned with is, if we don't control this, it will control us. So in the light of control, some of you hopefully don't recognize this, this is a code violation. It's a code violation, one of my warehouses, I fired my mowing service and let the weeds get too big, so code violation, sent junior over, we're fixed now. But this is about code. We're under the code. We agreed to the code, the codes of the city, the legislation keeps us equal, keeps us in line, makes us be able to be a community, so we have a background that's common for respect and for fair treatment of all. So that brings us to our project. My contention is that the White Castle project is a code violation of City Code 3116-12, which is all the new construction guides. The guidelines are based on this in all the historic guidebooks, but it's also a city code. It's a law. On 311612C, it speaks to the compatibility of the buildings surrounding this. The current project is 250% the size of the building that's next to it, which is 989 North High Street. 3116-12A has to relate to the existing building surrounding it. The new developments in the short north, the Wood Company at West Second on High, the Dakota Building, and the new Hubbard, 21 West Hubbard Building do relate and tie in. They're nice four-and-a-half, five-story buildings. They fit in, they look right, they almost appear to be Victorian. The third problem with the code that is not being applied is 3116-12M, which says it has to be typical of the surrounding historic area. There is nothing Victorian about what's being proposed. This is Victorian village. It's not iconic village, okay? Some examples of what would be typical Victorian village are the Sel circus house and any of the Yostin-Packer architecture that's in town that's Victorian. So please, just enforce the code, and we will have a building that fits in.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you.
What I'm going to do is have the additional speakers come up, and if you can stay there, and we'll do kind of questions all at once. You don't have to stay right there. You can move a little bit. After all three, Lisa, do you want, Mrs. Wood? And Mr. Shaw, if you want to come on up? We'll go through all three, and then we'll ask questions and answer questions. Mrs. Wood, can you state your name and address?
Yeah, Lisa Wood, 41 West Second Avenue. Good evening, President Klein and councilmembers. I would like to have you look at this picture. This is a backup of traffic on Second Avenue on a Wednesday at 1:30 in the afternoon, and that's Top Gun that got stuck in front of our house. My concern has been traffic on Second Avenue, and I don't think it's been addressed. And then I started wondering if at any point in time, has the city, the development department, or the developers had any conversation with the chief of police or the fire chief to see what the impacts of these huge developments are going to what the impacts of these huge developments are going to have on their departments and on our safety? That's it.
President, councilmembers, appreciate your time today. You know, I pondered today what I was going to say. I know a lot's been said over the time. We've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of the councilmembers here and understand our position. I guess let me start to say that I feel blessed to be in the Short North, in the Victorian Village area. My father wrote the...co-wrote the ordinance that established Victorian Village. He's still living, so I know as a founding father what his intentions were for this area, as he still loves to point those things out to me. But the reason why I'm in front of you today is I am the oldest business in the Short North and in Victorian Village with running the funeral home with my brother and father, the Shaw Davis Funeral Homes. And I guess what is taking me back a little bit is we pay a special improvement district tax the last couple of years that were voted in by the businesses that border Pearl and Wall Alley to High Street. We've never had anyone from the Short North Business Association or the Short North Business Alliance ever approach us. Actually, they're siding with the developer, the development. And I say that my family business in the area is not in any special favors. That's not what I'm asking for. I've grown up on Second Avenue since 1976. I'm fourth generation. I've seen the area changed. We've been fortunate to take it from a blight, a ghetto, to what it is now. It's the jewel of the city of Columbus. Everyone raves, wants to go to the Short North, and we've been very fortunate. Other areas haven't been able to have our success. Old Town East and some of the areas still struggle with pockets of blight. But what I guess I'm trying to say is, I get to what the matter is before you, the EDA. There is no financial hardship for this property. We have already sacrificed in the last parking variance that the board of zoning gave to the Wood Project. We had a little bit to give. Our street has nothing. We have no parking. We have no traffic flow. We have people parking in front of the fire hydrants in the alleyways unless we give up our backyards. There's nothing to be had. So the EDA sounds great, but the problem is the numbers don't add up. By code, they're supposed to have 312 spots. They're offering 205. The city's giving them a parking lot and a million dollars that they'll pay back in 30 years. After that 30 years, the public parking goes away. It's absorbed into the development. It's really a loss for our area. We have nothing more to give in that area. So what I'm saying to you is, you've only had the EDA for really two weeks for the revision. Don't enter a rush into judgment to figure out whether it's going to be good or bad. Take your time with it. This area is vital. If we lose this, we lose it to transient people that are coming in that don't belong to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. First, do any of my colleagues have questions? Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown. So one thing...I was on your porch last year. All three of you are the three that didn't get to speak, and we had a conversation about, you know, somewhat what the area commission would do or what discussion they would have. And as we've gone through this process, I've been very clear that that's who I look to since they're the ones evaluating the plan, looking at it. And just curious, your thoughts on why or what you would recommend why we wouldn't look to what the area commission came to agreement with, what they kind of approved, and the plan that they said, you know, this is what we want. I know they don't live directly on the street. I know they don't have the same traffic challenge, but people in the community have come forward and said, yeah, this is something that we would look to support and look to counsel to support.
To get increased participation and inclusion, I believe we have a breakage in our communications with the development company or Economic Development Group, because it appears that they will engage in a full conversation design and an entire plan that's baked without any inclusion or talking to the people that are most affected. So I just want that to be able to be opened up. I don't know. I don't read. You know, I'd have to go searching for what's going on with the economic development ahead of time to be able to have inclusion. Maybe if there's a new project on the horizon, we could make sure that they reach out to every resident within 1,000 feet that's going to be impacted. Then we can have more feedback. We can have more inclusion. We can have a higher participation rate. And we don't get down to the end of this where everybody has their design, everybody, everything's done, and, oh, gee, we're up for a vote. Well, there weren't a chance for us to have input to alteration. So, yeah.
If I can address that real quick, the two things. One, it wasn't me personally, but Bill Wood actually went to the area storefronts on both sides of the Short North, Italian and Victorian Village. He visited 25 storefronts. Only one storefront was in favor of this development, and to many of their surprise, didn't even know there was a group that was opposed to this development and are now just getting involved. So that's the first point. So the other thing that is misleading, as happened at the Victorian Village Commission, is the Short North Business Alliance was in favor, saying it was going to add 126 parking spaces. And I think that's the myth that we're seeing, is this already goes into the fact that it creates a deficit for parking. If it...it's...by code, needs 312. They're offering 205, so they need a parking variance. So they're already going to the city, saying, we know we can't even comply with the number that you need, but give us a variance. It's misleading because people say, oh, instead of having 42 public parking meter parking spaces, we're now going to have 105. The numbers are skewed.
Mr. Shaw, I understand that, and parking especially is definitely a hot topic around this development. And one of the problems that I know we talked about at the public hearing that I held on this is that the Short North is still...it doesn't have the urban commercial overlay. And so essentially, the parking requirements for businesses in the Short North are equal to what they would be on, say, Morse Road. And, you know, any of us who live in the Short North, visit the Short North, know that it is a very different reality there, and it's very typical for businesses to apply for parking variances. So, but I...I understand that parking is a big concern.
If I could just say in fairness, when we talked to the planning department, they told us that everybody usually gets a 20 percent reduction for parking variances. This is almost 50 percent, so there is a big difference.
Okay. And...
I don't think anybody's really answered Mike's question about the Victorian Village Commission.
I'm used to that in my household, so.
Okay, I have to address it. We don't feel that the Commission handled itself properly. They gave this project a certificate of appropriateness before giving them materials, signage, and lighting. And one of the members said, come on, people, we can do this. It's never come back to bite us in the ass before. So we think that they should be an elected committee as opposed to appointed, and that's something that we are looking into. Did that answer anything?
Thank you. And Mrs. Wood, you also had a question. Director Messer, do you...are you able to speak to her question about police and fire and the one-stop shop? Oh.
Yeah, if you could just repeat your question, sure.
Well, I just wondered, you know, having the traffic so bad that Top Gun get down the street may serve, and then the other problems going on in the street shutdown, I feel that our safety is...
Sure.
I just wondered if anyone has a discussion with the police or the fire department?
We do. So all projects that are being proposed, when they get to the place where a site plan is included and they go through a process, we do route all of those plans across numerous city agencies, including police and fire. So they will have input, traffic. All the various departments in the city do weigh in on all of those issues.
Okay. And I...Mr. Quinn, since you spoke before, I want to give you a chance. Yes?
I have some skepticism over the 25 businesses who were allegedly approached. Storefronts, I certainly was not. I feel like I am as well-connected to the business community as absolutely anybody down there and don't know of one store or restaurant who is not in support of these developments. So I just feel like that could be something that very much sways this vote, to feel like the business community is against this, and I do not believe that that's a fact.
Okay. Thank you to all of you. Can the witnesses sit down? Thank you. So I just...I want to reflect a little bit on this project. I want to, first of all, thank you to the residents for your passion around this, the residents who are here for your passion around this. Thank you to the developer for going to repeated Victorian Village Commission meetings. I believe there were seven, if I remember correctly, and engaging in a dialogue. And I understand that, you know, there are different points of view coming...that come to every project, and I think we've heard many of those here tonight. So I appreciate the passion also of the business community and of you, Mr. Quinn, in coming out here tonight to talk about how this development could affect your business. And I'm encouraged to see such passionate participation on many sides. I want to highlight sort of about both this project and the next one. One thing they do for the Short North is bring office space. That's something that's very important to the city of Columbus because we rely on income tax. And when our city budget is getting cut and cut and cut by forces we can't control at the state level, we are more and more, on an annual basis, reliant on income taxes. So when we see the opportunity to bring highly marketable Class A office space to an area that businesses are clamoring to be in, it's very important, not just for, you know, this year or next year, but for Columbus 25, 35 years down the road. And when you look at the numbers for these projects and actually factor in what kind of jobs they can attract, we actually have...I thank the Department of Development for all the work that they've done on this, and they put together really a look at what Class A office space has been in the Short North already. And the most recent project, major Class A office space project completed, 52 percent of the total employees in the project were new jobs to the region. These weren't relocating from another part of Columbus or even Dublin. They were new to the region, and the average annual wage was $85,000 a year. So these sorts of developments do give us...and currently, the vacancy rate in the Short North for Class A office space is zero. We are completely filled up, if you will. And that, for me, is a very important factor when looking at this project and the next one on the agenda. When we factor in those kind of numbers, that kind of new job attraction, and that kind of average annual wage, we see tax revenue in the millions for the city. So I understand that some of the concerns that were brought up around the repayment of the loan, but that is...those are strictly loan...those are strictly capital dollars, and it doesn't even factor in the annual revenue that we'll be getting from these new jobs, very important in a region that is growing at the rate we're projected to be growing. And I also want to, and forgive me, colleagues, for talking a little bit long on this, I also want to just say that I really agree that the Short North is a jewel, and it really helps to bring visitors to our region. It is...it's absolutely an important neighborhood to our city. And just as it's changed over the last 20 to 30 years, it is natural and for our economic benefit to see continued growth. That is my belief, and I am, again, thankful for all of the participation from various sides of this debate. But because of those reasons, I would like to recommend and move for passage.
It's okay, Chair, I...
Oh, did I mess up?
No, you didn't mess up.
Oh.
I just wanted to see if it's okay with you, if Director Shoney had any comments, because I know that he was instrumental in putting together these agreements.
Thank you, President Klein, Madam Chair, members of council. Let me...I'll try and keep my comments brief, and to a couple of the things I think that a discussion between the members and the community, I think, answered a lot of the questions that were out there. I think there are a couple of questions that I'd like to dive into that the community asked. One was the level of input and the process for that. We really do rely on the, in this case, Victorian Village Commission process to vet that out. As Councilmember Brown alluded to, there were seven. The developer on this project had to go back to the commission seven times with this project before the commission granted its approval. In our discussions with the developer on this project, we really focused our discussions on the financial deal around the parking. It was up to them to go and convince the Italian...I knew I was going to do that at some point, Victorian Village Commission of the appropriateness of this building. And so when you look at the plan and when you look at the city's process, it really is up to the commission to determine that appropriateness and when that fits in to the architectural standards of the community. I think the Director Messer addressed the issues around the city's process for comment from police and fire and public service in terms of traffic and safety, so I think those things have been addressed. And then, you know, I think the one thing I also want to address that I know has been brought up in previous sessions is concern about there being at least a perception of a conflict of interest in this, and we have tried to be very careful about how we have structured this and how we frankly carried ourselves through the process. The city does not have a financial interest in the success of this garage. The way we have structured this deal, the city's repayment, the city's payment, will be in the form of payments for a special assessment. If the garage is a complete failure and since empty and does not generate any revenue for the developers, the city's payment is the same. If the garage is successful, the city's payment is the same. We believe very strongly that the public needs to have trust that we don't have an ulterior motive in how we are going about our projects, and that was something we thought was very important. The structure we've put in place with special assessment has the added benefit of being an incredibly secure form of payment. Our payment comes in in front of any mortgages on the property because it will go in as a tax assessment if it is not paid. So we feel very secure about the financial structure that we've put in place on this. Be happy to take any questions that any members might have.
Thank you, Director. Actually, I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Brown for leading this effort. This is, as you heard from Mr. Shaw and from Mrs. Lisa and from the members of this community, that this is a very personal conversation, and we get that. Councilmember Brown has led an effort that has not just had a stellar public hearing where we had a lot of conversation, but also she and her staff organized us to go out to the community, and we met in Shaw Davis Funeral Home with the community. And I just appreciate it. I think that we get it. We get it. This conversation, this ordinance, is about community, and it's about growth, two things that don't have to be at odds. And after this vote, there will...we will still be a community, and there will still be growth. But I think what you've seen through this process, I hope you've seen through this process, is a council, is an administration, is a city that is committed to working hand in hand together. And so after this vote, we will still be...we'll be there. But I certainly want to thank and congratulate Councilmember Brown as she has executed this process.
There's been a motion that's been outstanding. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you, President Klein. Next, we have ordinance 1231-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement and a real estate purchase contract with Wood Operating Company and Schiff Capital Group. Wood Operating Company and Schiff Capital Group, and to the extent applicable, to waive the land review commission requirements of the Columbus City Code. This is again in the same neighborhood, and we again have multiple witnesses. Mr. Quinn, you signed up for both. Would you like to come up again, or was the one applicable to both?
I feel like, yeah, same.
Okay. Thank you. Then I would like to invite Mr. Eric Anderson and Mr. John Kennedy to come up.
We only have comments.
There is not. There is not. Right. Hold on. Where's my sheet? Correct. Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues about this development? All right. Seeing no comments or questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 1336-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contribution agreement with WC Partners LLC as part of the Neighborhood Structured Parking Incentive Program, to authorize the expenditure of $1 million within the Development Taxable Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. And this is the, the contribution agreement that we have discussed relating to the repayment over 30 years. Director Shoney, is there anything that you want to add to this one, to 1336?
Thank you for the opportunity, but no.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 1261-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Columbus Sister Cities International Incorporated, to administer the Columbus Sister Cities International Program, to authorize the expenditure of $75,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. And Mr. Tim Sword, could you please approach? I invited Mr. Sword here just to give a brief update to council members about Columbus Sister Cities, and the importance of continuing our support.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all for your continued support of Greater Columbus Sister Cities. Last year was our 60th anniversary for having a sister city. Genoa, Italy was our first sister city. And last year, to mark that occasion, Councilmember Tyson led a delegation of emerging leaders to our sister city to reemerge and reconnect with the economic development, education, and other organizations in that community. What's highlighted when a council member, or a mayor, or another elected official goes and leads one of these trips is the connections and the doors that are opened. I worked for the state of Ohio for a number of years in economic development to promote exports, and I can tell you that the important thing when you open these doors is that you have companies and organizations that can take advantage of it, and it creates a ripple effect. From that Genoa trip, we had a number of professionals who came back, and one decided to learn Italian, because this was something he was definitely going to get involved in. Another one has, he was a Baptist minister, or is a Baptist minister. Based on those connections, he's organized meetings here in Columbus with interfaith groups to see how we can connect sister cities in that realm. But as it relates to economic development, last year, we also signed a sister city agreement with Accra, Ghana. Mayor Coleman's last request was that we have a sister city in Latin America, which is Curitiba, Brazil, and then one in Africa, which is Accra, Ghana. Mayor Ginther last week sent an invitation letter to the mayor of Accra to come to Columbus in July with a delegation to make connections in economic development and education, with the intention of also following up that trip. The mayor intends to go to Accra in November to reciprocate. Since that agreement, we've had the King Arts Complex signing a sister city agreement with the National Theater of Ghana, which is based in Accra. Franklin University is engaged in selling 20-plus educational online institution, or programs, to the Lawway University. So, there's, there's opportunity there to, to connect. But I just want to just thank you for your leadership in supporting our efforts to make these connections. It is a collaborative effort. We're a small organization, and we rely a lot on our volunteer board, which are professionals, almost all engaged in international development, whether it's companies, or schools, or other related organizations. I think I want to say that, and just kind of conclude that, you know, one of the things that's important to this city, as it looks at the global market, is to really celebrate our diversity. And by having these sister cities that are well-located around the world, we can engage with populations in our own community that would like to make those connections, and we've been able to leverage that, and we'll be able to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sword. Any questions? Great. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all I have in economic development. May I move to administration, President Klein? Thank you. In administration tonight, we have ordinance 1176-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with Columbus Urban League in support of planning for the 2018 National Urban League Conference, to authorize an appropriation of $15,000 in the jobs growth sub-fund, to transfer appropriations within the general fund, and to authorize an expenditure of $40,000 in the general fund. I'd like to thank councilmembers Harden and Stenziano for their help with this piece of legislation. I'm excited to support the 2018 National Urban League Conference. It's pretty great that it's coming here to Columbus, and, and I'm just very excited to watch our local chapter dazzle everyone. Any additional comments? Yeah?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Just want to say that this is a huge opportunity for our city to really sell ourselves. There will be thousands of folks from around the country and around the world that will come to Columbus as part of the National Urban League Conference. We look forward to putting on a great conference, and really showing to the community, the entire country, what Columbus has to offer. So, thank you so much for your leadership on this effort.
Thank you. With seeing no more comments, I move for passage. Or, do you have any? No. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That is all I have in my committees, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is Finance, and in President Protem Tyson's absence, Councilmember Harden will be reading Finance this, this evening. Chairman? For your.
Thank you, Council President. This evening in Finance Department Committee, we have ordinance 1122-2016 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into five UTC contracts for the option to purchase HVAC parts and filters with the Columbus Climate Controls Company, Allied Supply Company, Inc., Progress Supply, Inc., Tri-Dim Filter Corporation, and American Air Filter Company, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $5 to establish the contracts from the general fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. Director Lombardi, would you please speak to as why we're waiving competitive bidding?
Sure. President Klein, Councilmember Harden. To begin with, all five of these awards are through a competitive process. These, this bid was competitively bid. This, traditionally, we would, we would award one contract for all these items, and would not be able to cover all the manufacturers, or all the items that are needed throughout the city for HVAC. So, we have, we have embarked on a e-catalog system within the city, and so, all of these companies provide catalogs with various manufacturers, and various parts and pieces that we need for HVAC. This allows our city agencies the opportunity to bid as a amazon.com kind of an experience, so that they can pick the lowest-priced item at the time of their looking to order. So, this is why we are waiving the competitive bids, because the code does not allow me to award the same item to more than one company. But this helps our e-catalog system that we are developing citywide.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments on this legislation? If not, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Well, next, we have 1191-2016 to authorize and direct the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders for the payment of the annual membership dues for the city of Columbus with various professional organizations, to authorize the expenditure of $115,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Among the various organizations to which the city subscribes are the National League of Cities, the Ohio Municipal League, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Hana News Service, Government Finance Officers Association, Central Ohio Organization of Public Purchasers, and the National Institute of Government Purchasing. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And lastly, in Finance, we have ordinance 1194-2016 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to execute those documents necessary to enter into contract, or enter into a lease termination agreement with the Columbus Metropolitan Library, and to declare an emergency. Folks traveling down Grant may have seen that the main library is under construction. Folks may not have known that during this construction period, their administrative offices moved to one of our buildings, the Jerry Hammond Building, 1111 East Broad Street. But because of the good work of the folks at the Columbus Metropolitan Library, they are ahead of schedule, so they are leaving our building early. And so, this is, allows them to do that. And so, want to encourage folks to take advantage of this new asset, which I think opens June 25th. It's absolutely beautiful, and it's a community gym. So, if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That is all I have in Finance Committee. Mr. President.
So, it's 6:26. What I'd like to do before we adjourn for zoning and take a little break for a couple minutes is, the clerk's office informed me that there was a speaker slip back in Economic Development that was filed prior to 5 o'clock, was filed according to the timestamp at 4:57. So, I want to give Joanne Goldhand, is that how you pronounce your last name, Ms. Goldhand? And let me, before you begin your three minutes, apologize, I just now got this, but I wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I would have urged you to table the matter for three, this being the issue about the $1 million that we're giving to WC, for three reasons. One, it's premature. Two, we aren't getting the value of the $1 million for the taxpayer. And three, we aren't getting the bargain that we thought we made for the lot. This hearing is premature, because tomorrow, the BZA will hear the variances necessary on this project. To hear it tonight is purchasing, investing in a project that you don't really know what it is. And more importantly, it's disrespectful to the careful work that the staff and the members of the BZA are undertaking. Additionally, I think that this matter is not a good use of taxpayer money, given the existing tax incentives abatement provided, and the hot real estate market that we have in the short north. We don't need more incentives for development alone. We have lots of needs in this city, and in the short north. Schools, trash pay, cup, to name just two. And as Director Shoney pointed out, there are other neighborhoods that need the money even more. But if we're choosing to spend the money on development in the short north, we need to get something really special that benefits the whole neighborhood. And, excuse me, Councilman Stenziano, you, you look to the Victorian Village Commission over and over, but the thing is, that they believed that the size of the project was something that the city wanted. And we all understand, and we all want development on that site. But the size of the development is not something that I think was predetermined by the city, but I think that that is what the county, the commission thought, because that is what the commission said. Anyway, when I first learned of this proposed development, I spoke to Director Shoney, who said it was necessary to increase parking in the neighborhood. I agree. We need parking in the neighborhood. He told me we'd get three spaces for each one space lost. However, when the BZA meets tomorrow, as Mr. Shaw already mentioned, they'll consider a variance of over 100 spaces. That's, that is, the project will provide 100 fewer spaces than zoning requires, not 120 more. They will tell you, and apparently Elizabeth Brown agrees, that each space does double duty in a mixed-use building, with residential parking at night and workers' parking during the day. I disagree, and I think the fact that you have not overhauled the zoning code to change what applies to mixed-use buildings means you also disagree. However, even if not, you must acknowledge that this project is not providing 80 extra parking spaces for the neighborhood. So, in closing, I wanted to ask you to table the matter, to allow the negotiations between the developer and the neighborhood, in a manner that encourages real negotiation for both sides, which I don't think we had, and now I don't think we'll ever have. Thank you.
I want to give Director Shoney the opportunity to respond, and I appreciate you sticking around, Ms. Goldhand, to give your comments, and please accept my apology again for the misplacement of the speaker slip.
Thank you, President Klein. I think we've covered most of what Ms. Goldhand has discussed. I would thank her again for coming down. She's been very constructive with me in her discussions, and I appreciate her input. But I don't think I have anything else real to add.
What about my colleagues? Do they have anything to add, or questions for Ms. Goldhand? Thank you, Ms. Goldhand. It is 6:30. If I can take a motion to recess, we're going to take zoning at about two or three minutes. Move to recess. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Regular meeting number 31 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
How about any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on that committee. Councilmember Page?
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I believe we also had someone who submitted a speaker slip. If we can have him also stand. Is Mr. Mark Cassidy here? All right. Well, we will persuade, we're swearing you in. I wish to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Our first ordinance is 1248-2016 to grant a variance from the provisions of Section 3356.03(c)(4) permitted uses for the property located at 6,000 Beechcroft Road, 43229, to permit a single-unit dwelling in the (c)(4) commercial district. The applicant is Rose. The applicants are Rose and Alex Mann. The proposed use is a single-unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval. Northland Community Council recommended approval. I would like to briefly ask Ms. Pine for a brief presentation on this. I think this is one, a great example of how the community came together, and we have a, a great story here.
Good evening. The requested council variance will allow a single-unit dwelling within an accessory structure at a vacant commercial swimming pool zoned in the (c)(4) commercial district. The new owners will be renovating the property for future use, and wish to live on-site to save time and money during the renovation. The site is located within the Northland One area plan, which recommends institutional uses at this location. The plan also recommends that redevelopment of institutional sites should be compatible with the surrounding area. Given the educational and recreational uses that are prevalent on this side of Beechcroft Road, and the residential uses on the west side of Beechcroft Road, the proposed residential use is supported. To ensure compatibility of the proposed residence with future commercial development on this property, the use is conditioned on being the sole use, or only in conjunction with fruit and vegetable market, educational, or garden center, commercial uses, and those uses were worked out with both staff and the Northland Community Council. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. And it's my understanding that this is the old Northland Community Pool that had been underutilized, and a nuisance in the community for some time. And a new buyer came in, and again, worked with the community, and worked with staff to- And a new buyer came in and worked with the community and worked with staff to come up with what appears to be a great proposal for reutilizing that land. So if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And our final zoning ordinance, 1296-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Section 3353.03 permitted uses of the Columbus City Codes for a property located at 5,600 Gender Road, 43110, to permit an eating and drinking establishment in the (c)(2) Commercial District. The applicant is Tammy and Brian Wallach. The proposed use is an eating and drinking establishment. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Greater Southeast Commission recommended approval. I would first like to move to amend this ordinance to emergency.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And I now move for passage as amended.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That is all we have for zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair. Any other business to come before regular meeting number 31 as it relates to zoning? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 31? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand adjourned on regular meeting number 31. As the administration comes back in, can I get a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 30? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand back in session on regular meeting number 30, and we left off with Health and Human Services. President Pro Tim Tyson chairs that committee, but in her absence, will Councilmember Elizabeth Brown please read Health and Human Services?
Yes, I will. Thank you, President Klein. In Health and Human Services, we have ordinance 1258-2016 to authorize and direct the Columbus Board of Health to enter into a contract with Partners Achieving Community Transformation for the deliverables of the United Foundation Grant to support the implementation of the Celebrate One Community Connector Core Project, to authorize the expenditure of $61,011.92 from the city's private grants fund and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health, excuse me, has been awarded a grant from the United Health Foundation to fund the Celebrate One Community Connector Core, and this project helps support a citywide resident engagement program to connect pregnant women to medical and social supports in their neighborhood. Every year in Franklin County, approximately 150 babies die before their first birthdays. In January 2016, 15 babies died, and of those 15, three were sleep-related infant deaths. The grant funds awarded provide for a contract with PACT, a neighborhood not-for-profit, to meet grant deliverables in an amount not to exceed $61,011.92. This ordinance authorizes and directs the Board of Health to enter into a contract with PACT for that total amount for a time period of February 1st, 2016 through January 31st, 2017. Are there any questions for my colleagues or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all there is in Health and Human Services. Can I go on to Workforce Development, which President Pro Tim Tyson also chairs? We have ordinance 1289-2016 to authorize the Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission to enter into a not-for-profit service contract with the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio and the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation for the 2016 Restoration Academy Project, to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. I'd like to move to table this ordinance to June 6, 2016.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown. The next committee is Public Safety, chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Council President Klein. Tonight in Public Safety Committee, we have three ordinances. The first is ordinance number 1029-2016 to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $391,581.24 from the unappropriated balance of the Wireless E911 Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Support Services to enter into a contract with Integra Corporation for maintenance services required for the current computerary dispatch system and to declare an emergency. Assistant Director Pashati, would you have any comments with regards to this legislation?
Council President Klein, Chairperson Brown, council members. This is for maintenance services for a computer-aided dispatching system. The CAD is used to assist in processing calls from the public to the Department of Public Safety's Dispatch, Police, and Fire. This system dramatically aids the call takers and dispatchers by electronically moving pertinent data to the proper field personnel over voice or data communications. CAD also stores data for record-keeping purposes. The Director of Public Safety originally contracted with Integra Corporation in March of 2010 for the city's CAD system, and they completed the project and went live with the new CAD system in 2011. And this is the fifth year of a five-year service contract. That's all I have.
If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Second ordinance is 1165-2016 to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Support Services to enter into a contract with Medical Priority Consultants, Inc., DBA Priority Dispatch, for maintenance services required for the city's 911 Emergency Dispatching System in accordance with the sole source provisions of the city of Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $35,883 from the general fund and to declare emergency. Again, Assistant Director Pashati?
Council President Klein, Chairperson Brown, council members. This is a maintenance and support agreement for Pro QA, our Pro QA software application, and it's an automated system which operates by evaluating incoming information according to logical rules built on expert medical knowledge for our fire professionals. It allows our medical dispatchers to carry out four important activities: structured and rapid caller interrogation and patient evaluation, accurate selection of the appropriate EMS unit response, relay of important patient and scene information to field responders, and the provision of essential dispatch life support. Pro QA is currently used in the main dispatch center for all EMS and fire incidents, and Medical Priority Consultants is the sole source supplier of the software and maintenance. That's all I have. Thank you.
If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And finally, ordinance number 1358-2016 to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Public Safety GO Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Public Safety to execute these documents necessary to purchase that real estate, real property located on Sanctus Boulevard identified as Franklin County Tax Parcel 610-231154 for the construction of a new police substation, to authorize the expenditure of up to $400,000 from the Public Safety GO Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Again, Director Pashati, and if we could have Director Lombardi speak to this issue.
Council President Klein, Chairperson Brown, council members. The Division of Police Precinct One, the Far North Substation, is presently located at the corner of Carl Morse Roads, within the same building as Fire Station 24. The Carl Road site is over one mile from the geographic service area of Precinct One, which is bound to the north by the Columbus Corporation Limit, to the east by Cleveland Avenue, the south by State Route 161, and to the west by State Route 315. The Far North area has undergone significant commercial and residential growth over the past several years. In 2015, the Division of Police received nearly 22,000 calls for service in Precinct One. And I'll hand it over to Director Lombardi.
Thank you. President Klein, Councilmember Brown, members of council. The city looked at various properties in the Far North area, and the Worthington Library System owned this land, and they were willing to sell the land. So the city of Columbus embarked on an agreement with them to purchase this land for the $400,000 that is before you this evening. This helps us with a partnership with the Worthington Library. There's also a school nearby and the Lozelle Road Recreation Center. So this will put a presence in that, presence of police in that community that has been needed, so they're not coming from Morrison Carl Road. We hope to have that completed by late 2018. The design dollars are about a million, and the construction is approximately estimated to be five million, so a total of $6 million altogether to construct this substation that's much needed on the north side.
Director Lombardi and Director Pashati, thank you. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all we have in Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The next service, or next committee is Public Service and Transportation, chaired by Councilmember Harden. Chairman, Flores.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 1180-2016 to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional engineering service contract with EMHNT for the Signal Installation General Engineering Signals 2016 Contract, to authorize the expenditure of up to $300,000 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Funds and to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 1195-2016 to authorize the Director of Department of Public Service to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement and construction contribution agreement with the NRI Equity Land Investments LLC pursuant to Section 186 of the Columbus City Charter for the construction of public infrastructure improvements in connection with the Grandview Yard, Third Avenue Railroad Bridge, roadway improvements project, Third Avenue Phase Two, Rail Street Phase Three, and the Fifth Edgehill Signal Improvements Project in an estimated amount of up to $5,530,946.61, to authorize the city auditor to deposit the funding contribution from NRI and to appropriate said funds and to declare an emergency. This project will create a roadway improvements around the Third Avenue Railroad Bridge in addition to signal improvements. This is a great example of public-private partnership on this project. The city will be accepting $5.5 million from the, from NRI, a $5 million grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission, $149,000 from the city of Grandview Heights. The city's contribution will be $277,698 to the project. So to be clear, for every dollar of city investment in this public improvement project, it has activated $38 of other sources, an amazing return on our investment. Director Shoney, do you have anything to add on this NRI ordinance?
Councilmember, no, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no question or comments, I move for passage. I apologize. Councilmember? No question, yeah?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 1196-2016 to authorize the Director of Department of Public Service to enter into, into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement and construction contribution agreement with NRI Equity Land Investments LLC pursuant to Section 186 of the Columbus City Charter for a construction agreement between the city and CSX Transportation, Inc., in connection with the Grandview Yard, Third Avenue Railroad Bridge Road Improvements, the Third Avenue Phase Two, Rail Street Phase Three, and Fifth Edgehill Signal Improvements Project in amount of up to $1,8,897, to authorize the city auditor to deposit the funding contribution from NRI and to appropriate said funds and to declare an emergency. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Chair Harden. I just wanted to thank Chair Harden. Early on, in my first few weeks, I had been contacted about where are sidewalks in this area, and Councilman Harden said, "They're coming. We got to wait for some better weather and the appropriate ordinance." And so I was just happy to see the follow-through and thank his office and the department for your clarity in terms of the process and getting this job done. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. Next, we have ordinance 1197-2016 to authorize the Director.
Councilmember?
I apologize, we got to passage. If there are no more questions or comments, I move for passage.
So we are on 1196-2016. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Passed.
Now that's teamwork. Next, we have 1197-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a reimbursement agreement with Lifestyle Communities LLC to provide for the construction and reimbursement of public improvements completed in conjunction with the roadway improvements, Lifestyles, New Omni Road, Ob Long About Project, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have 1288-2016 to amend the capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Columbus Engineering Consultants, Inc., for engineering, technical, and surveying services in connection with the ADA Ramp Project, 2016 general engineering project, to authorize expenditure of up to $250,000 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. If there is no, if there are no question or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
If it's all right with you, Council President, can we move to small and minority business? In Small and Minority Business Development Committee this evening, we have ordinance 1149-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public, Department of Development to enter into various contracts for the development and strengthening of neighborhood business organizations as part of the Neighborhood Economic Development Fund, to authorize the expenditure of the $72,000 from the Community Development Block Grant and to declare an emergency. Just want to thank Councilmember Page for coming out last week. Certainly want to thank Director Shoney and his staff for participating in a really insightful public hearing around the neighborhood community revitalization programs. This is one of those organization, one of those city programs that really works at lifting up businesses, small businesses in our communities, in neighborhoods, in corridors that need some support. We heard a lot of good ideas. Deputy, our, Mr. Lombardi, our Mr. Joe.
Mark Lundie.
Mark Lundie has some, has some really good takeaways that I look forward to working with Director and Mark on implementing, so thank you. Any additional comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Joe and Mark are awfully hard to get confused, but I do want to thank, in all seriousness, I do want to thank you and your colleagues for your interest in the subject. I think I heard back from my team that they, you had like 80 people come to the event last week, which is a fantastic sign of the amount of interest that we have in small business. These programs are really important. These are programs where something, I don't know what specifically we can do better, but I know we can do better. And so I think the hearing process that you and Councilmember Page went through, and I know from having talked to all the members, that everyone's very supportive of this effort, so thank you.
Thank you, and just want to also shout out Hannah Kobe from your team that also, Kobe Reed, that also supported and helped us with that project. Any question or comments? Move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Chairman. The next committee is Housing. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, President Klein. We have two exciting ordinances this evening, and I really mean it, they are. So we have ordinance 1267-2016, and I would like to ask two of our speakers to start making their way down, Ms. Camila Camp King, as well as Antoinette Savage. And it is to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County to provide grants to finalists in the Parcels to Places competition for improving vacant parcels in the land bank program, to authorize the expenditure of $60,000 from Development Taxable Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. I would now like to give the podium over to our two speakers, and thank you so much for your patience this evening as well.
Council President Klein, Councilmember Page, and council members, thank you very much for having us here. You want us to tell you about the, how we're feeling, or what we want to do, or?
You could tell us both. They are finalists for the Parcels to Places competition, and you can tell us a little bit about the process, your, your project, and just how it has been beneficial to you.
We are wired. We are wired. Anywho, the vision of the Berkeley Road Community Art and Flower Garden, it's to bring cohesiveness to our community. Our block watch, which is the Berkeley Road Block Watch, this is what we want to do. We want to take recycled items like tires, cylinder blocks, and turn those into forms of art. Like with the cylinder blocks, we have like a triple layer, which is four by four by 24, and it'll be garden beds, and it'll be mosaic. And the mosaic will be done by the children and the people in our community. I'm stuck right now, so go ahead, Cam.
So I think one thing that we are really excited about, excuse me, for our community garden is just the opportunity to really allow our residents to own something. A lot of the people who live in our neighborhood don't own their own home, they're renters. This is going to give them an opportunity to own and be more involved with their community so they can build a sense of pride. I think that's one of the most important things that we're so excited about for this competition, the Parcels to Places competition, and for our community garden.
And then we have one portion of it also, it's called the Little Tree Library. And what it is, they're just like little houses that you put on the property, and you put books in them. You give a book, take a book. If a person doesn't want to bring the book back, they can. We want to, they don't have to. We want to encourage literacy. But for me, one of the big things is, we don't know who our neighbors are. You know, Cam and I, we were going to put in the application, we went door-to-door on our block. The property we're talking about is across the street from me, four houses down, three houses down from Cam. So we're invested in the community. We're not going anywhere. But we went door-to-door asking neighbors, you know, this is what we'd like to do, you know, would you support us in it? And they said, "Yes, we'll support you." Okay, well, what would that support look like? And most of the people were saying, "Help." So everything that we're having in there, except for a wheelchair ramp and the walkway, is going to be built by the residents. You know, so that, for me, that gives us, gives them buy-in. You know, so, because where we live, there's a lot of stuff that goes on. But if we've got the community buying in, everybody's going to look out for it, make sure nobody else is tearing it up, you know, and respect it. But I want us to know who we are as neighbors and talk to each other so when stuff happens, you know, we can bring back that sense of community.
We also just want to thank you guys for the support of this competition. It has benefited so many community members in Columbus. So thank you so much.
Thank you both for coming down. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Well, again, thank you both. And just briefly, on the Parcels to Places program, oh, you can take a seat. Thank you. It's a pilot project which will showcase creative ideas and strategies for transforming Columbus's vacant land into an asset that contributes to community needs. And some of the partners in this pilot program were the Ohio Capital Corporation for Housing, the City of Columbus Land Redevelopment Office, the Columbus Foundation, and the Neighborhood Design Center. And there were nine finalists who all came up with amazing ideas to transform vacant lots within their communities. And just having their input and the excitement around the program has been wonderful. So I would now, with that, like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And my second ordinance this evening is 1339-2016, and I would ask Lori Sutherland with Community Housing Network to come down. And this is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property, 6079 Northgate Road, held in the land bank pursuant to the land reutilization program and to declare an emergency. Lori, I now give the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, City Council members. And thank you to the city and the land bank for reclaiming this site and making it available. CHN since 1987 has been providing housing to folks of mental illness and homelessness. And we have a continuum of buildings and developments, all the way from permanent supportive housing to independent. This, we're calling it Laurel Green, will be in the middle. It'll be an apartment complex, actually apartment building, for folks who are able to live independently but also need some support. So there'll be a resident manager, a secure building, spaces for socialization like computer center, community room, but it is definitely independent living. And this site is perfect for us, for our residents, because very few of them own cars. And if you're familiar with the area, it's less than a quarter mile from a Cota Bus stop, from the Giant Eagle, from a discount store, from restaurants. So what other people saw as a vacant lot, we see as a great opportunity for our residents. Our timing is, you'll see us again because we have to rezone this site, and we're also getting our funding. So we're going to be before the Northland Community Council this Wednesday. We've reached out to our neighbors, we'll sign a good neighbor agreement with anyone who's interested. We'll get all our funding, we hope, this year, start construction next spring, and then have a grand opening in 2018 in the spring.
Thank you so much, Lori. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you. Are there any additional comments, Director?
There you go. Thank you, Councilmember President Klein. I just would like to also thank the City Attorney's Office for their help on this. I think this is one that, a couple of years ago, there was a member of the City Attorney's staff who worked very hard on this project. I think she has moved on to bigger and better things these days. But I know that the City Attorney's Office was very helpful in getting this project off the ground and getting control of this property for us.
Thank you, Director. If there are no questions or comments, I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And that's all I have in Housing this evening, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. The next committee is Technology. Councilmember Stenziano chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, in Technology, we have ordinance 0776-2016 to authorize the assignment of all past, present, and future contracts and purchase orders with North American Communication Resource, Inc., NACR, to Converge One, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to renew an agreement with Converge One, Inc. for annual maintenance and support services in support of the city's interactive voice response IVR system, to authorize the expenditure of $103,878.62 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Information Services Operating Fund and declare an emergency. For my colleagues and the residents of Columbus, the IVR system supports the city's 311 Utilities and Technology Help Desk Call Centers. So that automated voice that you hear when you call the city's phone line will be able to continue to provide helpful assistance and direct you to the proper solutions. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, in Technology, we have ordinance 1059-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to renew an agreement with Horizon Chillicothe Telephone, DBA Horizon Telecom, for the purchase of annual NEC Software Assurance and to authorize the expenditure of $27,042.60 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Information Services Operating Fund. This ordinance will authorize the first renewal option, year two of a three-year agreement, and provide for payment of the annual software assurance with the coverage period from August 13, 2016, to August 12, 2017, at a cost of $27,042.60. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
President Klein, that's all we have in Technology. With your permission, we'd like to move on to Utilities. Tonight, we have ordinance 1001-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services agreement with Arcadius U.S., Inc. for the General Services for Security and Emergency Preparedness Project, to authorize a transfer and expenditure of up to $100,000 within the Water GO Bonds Fund, to authorize a transfer and expenditure of up to $25,000 within the Electricity GO Bonds Fund, to operate and transfer $100,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund into the Sanitary Sewer GO Bonds Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $100,000 from the Sanitary Sewer GO Bonds Fund and to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services agreement with Arcadius U.S., Inc. for the General Services for Security and Emergency Preparedness Agreement. The Department of Public Utilities and contracting with Arcadius U.S., Inc. to provide full service assistance for general security and emergency preparedness-related services. The general services may include, but are not limited to, providing all hazard, threat, vulnerability assessments, physical or cyber networks and/or equipment exclusive to the department or outside of the Department of Technology, risk assessments, meaning facilitation, field visits, risk mitigation, emergency planning, training, exercises, policies, and procedures, program development, implementation, AutoCAD, and GIS managed by DPU. Additionally, services in civil engineering, structural engineering, mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, environmental engineering, architectural design, process design, implementation, and controls design, geotechnical and surveying may be used for various assessments and emergency planning for operations managed by DPU. I'm hoping there are no questions or comments. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
President Klein, that's all we have in Utilities. If I can move on to Judiciary. Tonight, in Judiciary and Court Administration, we have ordinance 0972-2016 to authorize the municipal court clerk to modify a contract with Capital Recovery Systems, Inc. for the provision of collection services, to authorize an expenditure of up to $11,000 from the municipal court clerk collection fund. This legislation authorizes the municipal court clerk to modify a contract to enter into the first month of the third consecutive one-year renewal option with Capital Recovery Systems, Inc. for municipal court clerk's office. The term of one month is necessary for the municipal court clerk's office to end the term of the collection contract simultaneously for the procurement process. The contract is self-funding in that the percentage charged for collecting the receivables is added to the total debt collected pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 2335.24, Ohio Revised Code 2335.19, and ordinance 0130-202009, thereby negating any cost to the city of Columbus for this service. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, I have ordinance 1200-2016 to authorize the municipal court clerk to modify the contract with Keep It Safe, Inc. for data storage services, to authorize an expenditure of up to $128,400 from the municipal court clerk computer fund. These services provide data backup recovery from data loss and a comprehensive disaster recovery system for valuable data restoral for the Franklin County Municipal Court. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Passed. President Klein, before ending business in my committees, I ask that we go back to the consent agenda on page seven, where I have resolution 0125X-2016.
Please.
President Klein, I move to table the resolution indefinitely.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Resolution tabled indefinitely.
Thank you, President Klein. I have nothing further this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. In Rules and Reference, which is the committee I chair, I have one ordinance from the floor, and that is 1413-2016, to submit to the electors of the city of Columbus at a special election to be held on August 2, 2016, the question of amending the charter of the city of Columbus, such question to be known as proposed charter amendment number one, City Council. As the clerk indicated in her opening remarks, this was received on Friday afternoon and thus was not part of the agenda. And pursuant to Section 45 of the Columbus City Charter, the clerk has affirmed as valid the signatures of electors totaling no less than 10% of the total votes cast in the preceding municipal election. Therefore, per Section 45.1 of the Columbus City Charter, the council offers this legislation 1413-2016. As members of the Columbus City Council, we are obligated to put forth this measure to the electorate. So I am here tonight to offer 1413-2016 per Columbus City Charter, Section 45. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. I'm sorry, that's correct. Thanks, clerk. First, I need to move to waive second reading. There's a move to waive second reading. It has been seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Second reading waived, and now I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Ordinance adopted. Any other business to come before council this evening? Seeing none, we have a series of non-agenda speakers we'll take momentarily. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand adjourned.